Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners Budget Workshop. At this time, call the meeting to order.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to excuse Commissioners Tom Coulson and Lauren White.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Motion passes, and this time if we can go ahead and call the roll. It's time if everyone could please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for us being well and here, be with those who are not. Guide us in our decision making today for the betterment of Pitt County. I'm in.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Motion passes. If we could now hear from the Social Services Department, Dr. Fraser.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
County Manager and your team. I want to recognize my Board Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Dr. Fraser. As COVID has given us challenges, it has also presented us opportunities to look at how we administer and do business. And this year's budget is based on that premise. Based on all of these opportunities, the County Manager and my team are in serious discussions, and our presentation will be based on that. We are satisfied with our discussions and where we are currently. Ms. Angela, who is the Budget Guru, will help us to navigate this round. I'll be assigned to answer any questions.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Our proposed budget consists mainly of personnel as usual, you know, personnel is an important part. That's our biggest ask in the whole budget. So, we have our budget summary of what we're proposing, and then we have our drivers and why we're proposing it. For our federal and state funds, our proposed county appropriation this year is fourteen point thirty-seven million dollars. And it's one point forty-nine million dollars higher than the appropriation for FY twenty-one twenty-two. But also with this, we are going to have about three hundred and sixty-five million dollars come in because of the services that we provide to our clients and to our citizens with food stamps, Medicaid, all of our different benefits, all comes back into our actual county. Okay. Here you have the county appropriation comparison. As you see, last year we were at twelve million eight seventy-seven six sixty-four. This year at fourteen million three seventy-five two sixteen, which is eleven point sixty-three percent increase. Do need to remind you that out of the county appropriation, there is one million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars that we have to spend in county dollars in order for us to continue to receive our federal funds. For adult protective services, which is the first service area that we are going to talk about, their reports of abuse, neglect, and exploitation have continually increased over recent years. We did a comparison from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one. As you can see, it's up and down. With our adult guardianship, the growth is mirrored with the caseload trends, including trends for the adult guardians. Guardianship has continued to rise steadily throughout the years, and we did a comparison from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty. We didn't have the information for two thousand twenty-one, so that's why we didn't provide it. With that said, we are proposing five new positions. Our first one is a social worker two for our SA in-home. There was a state bill that went into effect July first of two thousand twenty-two. There is no waitlist allowed for SA in-home services anymore. We have forty-two clients on the waiting list, so this position would help us get the clients off of the waiting list. Anytime a person comes into DSS and they want to look at the SA in-home services, we have to look at it right then. We can't put them on a waiting list, so they have to actually be seen, and they have to be given their options. Your county cost for that one position is twenty thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Next position we have is a social worker two, which is cap. This is actually a revenue generating position. We have forty-seven cap slots currently, and for each of those cap slots, we receive three hundred and seventy-seven dollars per month. So, our projected revenue for the forty-seven cap slots is two hundred and twelve thousand six twenty-eight. There is a twenty thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollar proposed county cost in that, but it will be washed out by the revenue. Yes, ma'am?
Somehow another this roaring up here does not allow for me to hear everything you say.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. That's better when it's okay.
That better? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you want me to repeat that for you?
No.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have a social worker three that's for at-risk. This position would be able to continue case management for individuals on an ongoing basis, and hopefully reduce the risk of them having to be back in our custody. The county cost for that, of course, is nineteen thousand nine ninety-seven. Our next position is another social worker three, and this is for the Continued Quality Improvement Guidelines that have been set in place. Adult Services has never had this in place in the past, so this is new for them. So, we were requesting two new positions that could actually do a CQI team for them. County cost for the two positions combined is thirty-nine thousand nine ninety-four. For your total county cost of all five positions of one hundred and one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Later on in the presentation, at the very end, I actually have a chart in there that shows you the federal and state reimbursement versus the county cost for all of the positions that we're presenting. So, that'll be in there just for your information. Next, we're going to go to child welfare, foster care comparisons, as you can see, which is a good thing. We have less children in foster care than we have in a while. So, they are decreasing, however, decreased numbers do not mean that there are decreased issues because children are presenting with more traumatic experiences now. They're requiring more mental health services that are quite costly and sometimes not covered by Medicaid, so the county has to absorb that cost as well. So, less children doesn't always mean that there's less funds involved. Next, our CPS in-home services has decreased slightly. Our in-home services area with CPS is the area that works with the parents and the families to try to keep children in the home so that they don't enter the foster care system. So, the slight decrease, I don't know, I think that it was a little bit of COVID and some things that were going on last year, but it's only a very slight decrease. For our Child Protective Services reports of alleged abuse, they have steadily climbed. We did the comparison from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one. Your blue, your blue bar is your total reports that were taken by the agency. The gray bar is the total reports that were screened in, which means that they required more investigation and sometimes service is put in place for them. So, as you can see, that still is continuing to rise. With that said, we are requesting four and a half proposed positions for child welfare. First position request we have is a social worker three, which is for quality improvement. This is another of the CQI, the Continuing Quality Improvement mandates is being put in place by the state. These are just to put in place to make sure that everything is monitored and to make sure that we provide the best care for the children that we have and that we're responsible for, hopefully to avoid having any more fatalities in the county. Nobody likes to see a child that passes away because of something that we didn't do because of our negligence, so hopefully this will help us go through and see what we do and what we did that we could have done better. Your county cost for this is nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and we're requesting one position. Next, we're requesting two social worker, IAT Investment Treatment Social Workers. These would be floater positions that could work in any area of child welfare. They would be able to assist with intake. They would also be able to cover areas of vacancies when there were, hopefully so that we could make sure our initiations and everything is done timely. And your county cost for those two positions are seventy-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Next, we're asking for a point five FTE of Attorney One Child Welfare. We currently have a point five O FTE, and we just wanted to make it permanent to a one point F, one point O FTE, excuse me. And the county cost for that would be eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. A social worker three supervisor for in-home services. Last year, y'all were so gracious to give us four positions that were in our in-home area, and with that, it increased the load that were on our two supervisors. We only have two supervisors in that area. So, this supervisor would take the ratio back to where it needs to be for our caseloads. We also have a recommendation from the State Child Welfare Division that recommended that we actually have this supervisor put in place as well as the QCI. And your total cost for all four and a half positions is one hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Crisis interventions is in our Family Support Services programs. As you see, SIP has continued to grow. We had eight thousand four hundred and sixty-six applications in two thousand twenty-one. So, that leads to the Family Support Services request of three positions. First position is a Human Services Coordinator Three, which would be a supervisor over the crisis and energy programs. We are currently in corrective action for that, and we do need to make major changes, but we are currently in process of making those changes, so we're all working on it. Your county cost for that position would be thirty-three thousand nine eighty-two. A social worker two for crisis intervention, we need two social workers. Due to the increased caseload that we have, they are behind in processing applications because of the load that they have. So, the two positions would be seventy-seven thousand two hundred and two dollars in county cost. And all of our Family Support Services, the county cost would be one eleven, one eighty-four. And here are two largest programs, Food and Nutrition Services and Medicaid. As you can see, it's constantly going up, some to do with the pandemic. A lot of people lost their jobs and ended up having to come in for services that had never come in before. We are asking for five new positions. First one would be an Income Maintenance Investigator Two. We've had increases in our investigations, and this is also a revenue generating position because we are able to go back and recoup these funds, and most of the time, we can take them to court if they're large enough and get the funds back from the client. The cost for that position is twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Next, we were asking for an IM Supervisor Two. We need, we're asking for two of those in our intake area. This would reduce the supervisor staff ratio back to a more manageable. Currently, we have one supervisor to twelve staff. We're also asking for two supervisors in our redeterm unit as well, and it's to do the same, to realign our staff to supervisor ratio. For your total cost of your income maintenance positions is a hundred thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars for all five. And next, we go to Administration, my division. We currently have fifteen positions. We have not had any position increases in seven years. We're responsible for the compilation management of the annual budget and everything administrative and fiscal for the agency. This is just a list, a laundry list of a lot of things that we are all responsible for. We are requesting three new positions in the Administration Division. The first is a Human Services Coordinator Three, which would be for community outreach. This position would report directly to the Director. They would serve as the face of DSS in the community. They would be out to go out, they would go out into the municipalities and actually be able to bring the services to the clients that are in the community. Your county cost for that is thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. An Executive Assistant One is also requested, which would be the Assistant to the Director, and this position could also serve as clerk to the DSS Board. Currently, we have a Personnel Technician that is responsible for doing personnel as well as assisting the Director and being clerk to the DSS Board. We had an Administrative Assistant Position that was demolished back in two thousand twelve, and it was demolished because there were other, other critical areas that we needed the positions more, so it was given up for that. Your cost for that for one would be twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And we were asking for a Vehicle Operator One. We currently have thirty-seven vehicles in our fleet, and we have an Accounting Technician Two right now that's trying to make sure that the maintenance is done, vehicles are all taken care of, on top of taking care of the accounting duties that they have to do. We were asking for this position to make sure that we keep our cars in good shape since we have new ones, to make sure they're not damaged, and if there is damage, to make sure that it can be reported to us immediately. Make sure they're clean, make sure they're well maintained. So, your total cost for all of our administrative positions that we're requesting is eighty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. And this is the chart that I was talking about for the twenty point five proposed new positions and the projected county cost. As you can see, federal and state reimbursements are nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine seventy-two, and the county cost for all of the positions is five hundred and fifty thousand one ninety-eight. We are also requesting, in department-wide needs, we need some secure document signing software since everything is electronic now. We need something that we can use so that we can sign forms electronically. We need some self-scanning software that will help our clients be able to bring in their documents. They can scan them in, get a receipt, and go on their way, and they don't have to wait to see someone. We're looking into the Wait Anywhere, which is client flow technology, and that would be like your doctor's offices or your restaurants where you give them your cell phone number, and you can go out to your car or go wherever you want to go, and you can wait, and we can actually call you, and then you can come in for your appointment, so you don't have to sit inside if you don't want to. Documentation Solutions is something that we're looking at for DSS. This is an aid that would help our social workers be able to keep their documentation up because it's actually like a text, a talk-to-text type of program. So, they would be able to do more documentation while they were out in the field without actually having to stop and write their information down, and then they could give more attention to the clients one-on-one so that everything could be taken care of right there. They'd have their documentation done. There wouldn't be any need for them to come back into the office and do it. They'd have everything they need, and it would be real time. And then we also are in need of some redacting software because we have a lot of records requests. And with those records requests, we have supervisors that are actually going in and having to redact out confidential information that certain people cannot see. So, we need a software solution, and are looking into a software solution to assist with that. With that said, that's our presentation, short and sweet, twenty point five position, positions. We have been meeting with the County Manager and her finance team, and they have agreed or have recommended six positions, and we are pleased with those six positions. So, any more that you want to give us would be great, but you know, at this point in time, we'll take six. Have any questions?
I wonder about the software. This is a more administrative question, I guess. It seems like we would need some of these softwares in other areas, and I wonder about the availability of sharing between units. For example, document self-scanning, secure document signing. Are we not using those?
I will say, and others can chime in as appropriate, that we are probably behind on some of those technological things. Electronic contract routing, DocuSign, and things like that, that a lot of our peers are using. We are not there yet. They are on the radar to look at countywide. And I think it has to be a priority for us to get ahead of it countywide so that we don't see piecemeal expenditures in each department. So, yes, they need, yes, on the radar, not fully funded in this year's proposed budget because we have a little more homework to do as to what's the best product and how to roll it out efficiently.
So, we would be looking at something that would be usable for multiple departments?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to ask one question. Are all of your records in the system?
The majority of them are, yes.
They are not all in there. And that could be a problem for some. I just wanted the board to know that all of your records are not in the system.
Right.
Not in the system?
They shifted.
We can take a break, or we can charge.
Ms. Gallagher, I have reached out to Dr. Silvernell to ask him to head over.
Okay, so we might take a break.
Why don't we go ahead and take a break until Dr. Silvernell gets here, and then we'll resume. Welcome back. If we could now resume the budget presentation and moving on to public health, Dr. Silvernell. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Madam Manager. Good morning, Attorney and Ms. Clerk. Sorry if I seem a little flustered. I had three appointments at the same time this morning. Was trying to cover all three of them, and you guys moved up a little bit early on me. So, you kind of threw me off balance here, which is hard to do. But anyways, thank you for taking time to listen to us. I wish we had had opportunity to hear Ms. Gallagher's presentation sooner. My ask might be a little bit different this morning, so I've kind of got to go through the presentation as it is. But having heard Ms. Gallagher's presentation last night certainly changes my thinking on some of these things, and just haven't had a whole lot of time to readjust that. Certainly, the four percent market adjustment, cost of living, I think is great for the entire workforce and support that. Bringing back longevity, I think, is good for folks as well. The one suggestion I might make with that is to tier it, do a lower level at five years and then do the full at ten years. And I don't know how fiscally feasible that is, but I think a lot of our younger employees may not see ten years. And holding a carrot out in front of them, that's ten years in the future for a lot of our younger employees, may be too far. So, a five-year mark and a ten-year mark may make that program more effective from what I see in my younger workforce folks. So, just a thought there. But let me go through my presentation with you and take questions, and we'll go from there. So, glad you're running ahead this morning, even if it kind of pinched me a little bit. So, we are the Public Health Department. We were reaccredited in two thousand nineteen with honors. We met all one hundred and forty-seven reaccreditation activities demonstrating that we provide quality services. Accreditation, like everything else, has been forestalled with COVID. We are extended through two thousand twenty-five, I believe, right now. Will not be subject to that reaccreditation visit for a couple of years because of COVID, so they did give us some grace on that. Our eleven-member board has two vacancies. That's about an eighteen percent vacancy rate on our Board of Health for the county. Our veterinarian spot is vacant, and our nurse position was recently vacated, but we do have some candidates in the queue for that. The veterinarian position, we are having trouble filling. Our mission to protect, promote, and assure the health of all people in Pitt County, and we do take that seriously. All of us, from top to bottom, take that mission statement seriously. We protect folks from unnecessary environmental risks, exposure to lead, foodborne diseases, waterborne diseases, and other communicable diseases. I think that's certainly been borne out in the past two years. We promote individual and community health behaviors, which increase the span of our healthy life here in Pitt County. We also assure access to essential preventative services, health services for all people, and we'd love to find the capital to do more of that across the county. We are first responders. Again, I don't think that's ever been borne out more clearly than in the past two years where our folks were out on the curb doing testing, running mass vaccination sites, doing some door-to-door vaccinations, at-home vaccinations. We certainly are first responders, and our workforce has felt the pain of being a first responder for the past two-plus years. Our organization, I'm the Health and Medical Director, so it's a dual role for me. Across the state, there are really about four physician public health directors across the state. Myself, Marilyn Johnston in Johnston, in Johnson County, Julia Van in Guilford, and Bonnie Coyle down in Cabarrus. There are four of us across the state that are physician public health directors. Might be one more in there, but I think it's only four of us. There's been a lot of turnover in health directors as well the past two years. In excess of twenty percent of the health directors across the state have turned over during COVID. Our staff disciplines, we have over a hundred and forty, forty positions across the Health Department. We have a twenty-two percent vacancy rate, so right now, a little over one in five chairs is vacant in the Health Department. That ranges from physicians to nurses, social workers, educators, nutritionists, our outreach team. We have our own in-house laboratory, which as an aside, we're looking to get to a molecular system in our laboratory. Had some meetings about that recently. Our administrative folks, our dental and dental care staff, and our environmental health services folks that are out there protecting the environment and folks through that protection. Services for children, brief list of services for children. Marcia, this is one of your daughters, isn't it? Little, little family, family intro there. We provide services to women. We serve, when you look at our client base for clinical services, we are largely under the age of forty-five, largely African-American or Latina in the folks that we serve in our clinics. So, mostly minority, mostly female population who receive services in our clinic. One of the big ones, breast and cervical cancer screening. We know breast and cervical cancer is often detected later in minority women, and we do have a state program that allows us to provide those screenings to eligible women, both minority and non-minority. There are some non-minority women in that as well, based on income, but that program largely serves minority women. Our general services, we do some diabetes, cholesterol, and blood pressure screenings. We're in the process of doing that for the Pitt County workforce now. We serve as the workforce wellness team in the county. Immunizations, we have given in excess of fifteen thousand COVID immunizations since we first received COVID vaccination. We do tuberculosis testing and follow-up, including directly observed therapy, where my nurses go out to the home and administer tuberculosis drugs, tuberculosis medications to individuals where we observe them taking that medication to make sure that they're treated. STDs, our STD rates are through the roof right now with COVID, so we are struggling with that, including syphilis, which had been on sort of at least a level trend prior to COVID. We have seen a large increase in syphilis during COVID, as well as other sexually transmitted diseases or sexually transmitted infections, and of course, other communicable disease control. Fees for services are based on income and family size, and many of our fees slide to zero. So, there's often no charge to that family based on income. Some of you may remember, one of my first appearances before the Board of Commissioners almost three years ago now was to ask you to write off around three-quarters of a million dollars in bad debt that we were carrying in the Health Department. Our environmental health folks conduct inspections of food and lodging establishments, childcare centers, schools, hospitals. We do do the hospital for their food service and things like that, general cleanliness. We evaluate the soil for onsite wastewater systems. We inspect public swimming pools, and we are in pool season right now. Angie's hair looks very neat this morning, but pool season often makes her pull out her hair. We provide surveillance for mosquitoes. We're one of the few counties around the state that have the mosquito surveillance grant, so we do that in Pitt County and also help out neighboring counties with surveillance and control of mosquitoes. And then we inspect our licensed tattoo parlors, and Pitt County is fairly full of tattoo parlors. I only have freckles, no tattoos, but I understand if you want a nice tattoo, you can get one here in Pitt County. Our Health Education Division, for me, this really is where the money is in public health. We can treat a thousand cases of disease X today. If we don't change the behavior that leads to the acquisition of disease X, you know, we're going to have another thousand cases tomorrow. So, to me, health education is really where the money and the assets of public health is. And our small but busy Health Education Department is out doing presentations, consultations, program design. Some of those folks support our childcare centers, our tobacco control program. Our diabetes prevention program is housed in there, which is a Our diabetes prevention program is housed in there, which is a regional program. Our regional infection prevention support teams program is housed in health education. That's a regional program that came out during COVID, one of the most successful of the COVID interventions, to be honest with you. They'll be presenting at our Board of Health meeting next week, if you want to hear about that. Vital records, the health director serves as a local registrar. We process over 3,000 birth and 2,400 death certificates every year. I have two deputy registrars at the Health Department that handle that paperwork. We are in the process now of transitioning to the NC-Dave system and electronic death and birth registration system. And about 2,000 of those births and about 1,300 of those deaths are actual Pitt County residents. We process more than the typical county because of the medical center here in our backyard. Funding that supports our programs, budgeted, we have budgeted... This is for this year, Marcia? We're $16,647,957. That includes several large COVID grants. The state and the federal government, the state, the federal government pushed money to the state, pushed it out to the Health Department. We do have... So our budget swelled this past year from, I think, an original approved budget of 12 million-ish to the 16 million with about $4 million in COVID funding. Our revenue as of 3/31 was 11 billion and change. Our proposed budget is $15,316,167. Our expenses match that. Marcia always makes me say that we have 23,000-plus dollars that is required for payroll accrual by the auditors in that budget. Our proposed revenues for the year, state and federal, 3 million and change. Our county revenue is 8,371,983, or about 55% of the budget comes from the county. We're unusual in that you do support your Public Health Department better than many counties do, so I thank you for that. Our fees and charges are a little over 2 million per year. Fund balance is $984,099, and that includes the amount encumbered for the new Smile Safari that the manager mentioned last night. We're very pleased that that got moved up in our projects list of things for capital improvements. And I know our dentists and our dental staff are looking forward to receiving that new unit later this year. That brings that total to the 15 million and change number that we talked about. Our expenses, salary fringe for staff, 12,305,859. That's about 80% of the budget. Operating costs, 3 million and change. That's 20% of the budget. And again, with that number for accrual, salary accrual in there. We also included in this year's budget a request for some temporary staff. We have some part-time and temporary part-time staff that work in our clinic. These are nurse practitioners who help fill out our clinic schedule. In general, we have not budgeted for them in the past and have used lapsed salaries to pay them. In this year's budget, we did include an amount for that in this year's budget, so that there was funding for those providers in the budget. Many of those are our College of Nurse Faculty, which we have a partnership with, to provide their faculty practice experience at the Health Department. It serves the College of Nursing well, serves their faculty well, and it serves us by giving us access to expanded number of providers. There's over $3.6 million currently in grants that are brought into the County Health Department from national, state, and local funders. We do pass some grant dollars on to local partners who can better deliver a service. For example, the ECHM program is our syringe service program, and we have a state grant that we're in... Year three of, Madam Marcia? With for-harm reduction, that we pass that money to Diane Carden and the ECHM program to provide that syringe service here in Pitt County. Our justification, community health needs assessment. We do this every three years in cooperation with VidaHealth and Pitt Partners for Health. This examines the health status indicators for the county. Unfortunately, the data we used for this is all pre-COVID data, so we know that there's a tidal wave of issues coming from COVID in the post-COVID. A lot of mental health issues on the heels of this that we're seeing already. We're not sure about the whole issue of long COVID and where that leaves us. That'll probably be treated in private care offices, not so much in the Health Department, but there may be a role for us in that. So we do this every three years. After completing that process this year, this was one of Amy's final activities before she retired. Our Board of Health directed us to prioritize chronic disease prevention with a focus on improving access to healthy foods, reduction of sugar-sweetened beverages consumption, and increased physical activity in the community, mental and behavioral health, which we generally don't have a budget line for. Mental health services were stripped out of the Health Department about 20 years ago here in North Carolina, but we do have friends and we are working with those friends to bring some of those health services to the population and then to continue work on infant mortality prevention. We did request new physicians in the budget. Again, the manager's presentation last night has given me pause on this, and but I'm going to put this out there for you. We would like to add two social worker twos. The cost for that is about $67,000 apiece, and that is to support some of our outreach work, mostly for at-risk children and at-risk mothers. In health education, I've requested one full-time health educator position to become our public information officer, a full-time public information officer. Obviously, they'll work closely with the county. We have our own social media accounts. We feel we need to expand our presence in social media and would like to have a dedicated person to that. This was one of the roles that Amy did as the Division Director, as the Deputy Director. In order to refill her position, I feel I need to decompress her position because she was doing the work of three or four folks and loved it. There were nights I had to chase her out of the Health Department and send her home. But I would be incredibly lucky to find somebody to take that, who would take all that responsibility for the salary level that would be offered for that position. The other position in health education that we'd like to do, this is where our preparedness program is located. It's mostly an educational program, but it is also a response program. They coordinate our response. It is currently funded right now with something that's called the FEP HPP Grant, Public Health Emergency Preparedness slash Hospital Preparedness Grant. So the grant's been around since just after 9/11, the early 2000s. Started as sort of a bioterrorism grant, but generalized public health emergency preparedness grant. We have a wonderful young lady in that position. We'd like to move that position to a public health services planner position and make that a full-time position and not a grant-funded position. That grant has been relatively stable, but certainly COVID has shown us that we need this position, whether that grant is there or not, and would like to move that position. And this might be one that with some combining of positions, we could potentially accomplish, Janice, so there may be a way to create that position in the department without actually getting a new FTE. So I'm certainly willing to consider that. That was slightly more costly. That's $72,540 is the salary we would anticipate for that position. In environmental health, we've requested one new full-time equivalent as a processing technician for our front office. We know sometimes we have trouble getting applications in. Folks come in and need help with processing applications or probably getting records requests. We would like to step that up. That would be about a $57,000 cost. And again, that may be something with some consolidation or crossover. We may be able to get that position through reclassification. Fees, and Angie did come this morning to address questions for you. Yes, there is a wait time with septic fees. Some of that I can't discuss in an open forum, as you're aware of. I will tell you, there are two sides to every story when it comes to complaints from constituents, and not all of it is environmental health's fault. We also had positions in environmental health that were frozen during COVID, and we were not allowed to refill some retired positions that left us behind in staffing. And while we have a wait time, our wait time is not as bad as many places in North Carolina. Other counties have much longer wait times than Pitt County. Site revisit fee, we find sometimes that we go out to the sites and sites are not properly marked, and that's staff time where that staff member could have been more effectively used, and we have to go back and revisit the site. We've asked for a revisit fee. We've asked for an expedited permit fee for pools and tattoos. Often on the eve of Memorial Day weekend, which is just a couple of weeks away now, we get a boatload of pool applications where the pool operators want to open the pool for Memorial Day weekend. And even though we remind them all well in advance to get their renewals in and request their inspections, sometimes people wait till the last minute, so we get a barrage of those right before the Memorial Day weekend. And we would like to offer an expedited fee for that. Same thing with tattoo parlors. We remind them when their registrations are due, but we often get requests on the eve of their expiration or even the day that they expire and wanting us to drop everything to re-permit them. We have a dedicated person who does some of that work now, but we've asked for that. The food safety managers course, this actually came from Commissioner Nunnely. Commissioner Nunnely had asked us to meet with a local restaurateur, which we did. And one of the suggestions that the restaurateur had was to bring that safe food handling course back into the county and teach it here in the county. So those are new fees, but they're not anything that anybody's required to pay. But we wanted to offer that to our restaurateurs in the county. In general, in the past, it's been done at the Ag Center, in the auditorium at the Ag Center, and there are fees for the books and for proctoring the exam and that sort of thing. So we'd like to bring that back into the county and offer that to our restaurateurs. We feel that also facilitates the inspection process because if we have taught you how to do it and we go in and you're not doing it the way we taught you, you know, we can say, hey, we didn't teach you that way in class, so why aren't you following what we taught you in class? So we think that that kinda, again, fosters that public service mission of the department as well as giving us that chip with the restaurant owner, say, hey, we taught you to do this the right way. Why aren't you doing it the right way? The display fee for spas, this is where companies come in and they set up these portable hot tubs and things like that, like a home show. You probably don't remember now, but in the fall of 2019, there was an outbreak of Legionella at the Western State's Agricultural Center Agricultural Fair that involved hot tubs and spray setups. And a number of folks acquired Legionella, which can be a serious infection of the lungs from these things. It's a bacteria that loves to live in water systems, and if you aerosolize it in a spray system or a hot tub, you make it where somebody can breathe that bacteria in and get infected. So the state has asked that we go out and inspect these facilities when they set up for a home show or a spa swimming pool show. And some of these things run, there's the initial charge and there's a re-inspection. If it's after 10 days, Angie, seven days or 10 days? If they fail. I thought there was a time window in that too for the longer-running shows. Okay. So that's the genesis of that fee. We don't have... We have to do those inspections, and we feel the fee should be charged for those inspections under state law. Fee increases, these were the proposed fee increases for septic services. There's a well fee in there. Again, that was, as Janice pointed out, that was one that we've been charging. It just wasn't in the books. It wasn't in your fee book, so we wanted to get that in there. We are sometimes asked to sample well water. We do go out and do water samples in the daycares and schools and things like that. Sometimes we sample private water sources as well. So the fees, I won't go through all of those fees if you have questions. I did have Angie's here if you had questions about the fees. Electronic records, Epic went live about four years ago. Epic connects us with the School of Medicine, with the hospital system. UNC and Duke also use Epic, so a patient who's seen here and has records in Epic, those records can be seen there. My son receives some treatment down at MUSC. They're also on Epic, and his records were down there from here. So having that is good from the standpoint of helping to coordinate care, but it comes at a cost, and we pay, in addition to what was paid back to set this up, we pay about $73,000 annually, based on largely on the number of providers we have for that. So it's a monthly cost of $6,100 per full-time provider in the practice. And then for anything we want to add, we incur additional charges from Epic, from VidaMedical Centers, our Epic provider. We incur those additional charges, so when we need to change a report, create a report, we have those fees in there. That's one of our cost drivers in public health records. Other things that we have record or software subscriptions for, we have done a lot of Zoom, both for outreach patients, internal meetings, community meetings, the AutoCAD for drawing blueprints, Bluebeam. Relias is a new educational software. It's a new learning management software system. We purchased to replace something we had called HealthStream. Really impressed with the Relias system. Has all of the core modules that we need for our staff and then has, in our catalog, I think there's almost 1,000 other courses that you can take, including billing courses, clinical courses. This has a great diversity, equity, and inclusion module. It's an hour-and-a-half module that all of our staff are required to take every year now in that. But that came in a price tag of almost $20,000 to replace the failing HealthStream that we had. And then Toronto was something that we call, used to be called Televox. That's our appointment reminder system that sends texts and voice messages out to folks for appointment reminders. We did have job reclassifications in the budget. We understand we're not supposed to budget for those, that that's Brian's job to find that money if and when reclassifications have come through. We are also expecting at some point there to be a bigger Medicaid transformation bill to us. There's something called separate and directed payments, which none of us really understand, but the state generates a bill, they send us the bill, we pay the bill. That goes back to the health insurance company, and eventually we get money back. But it's this sort of cyclic process where we do get a charge and have to pay that. We just paid our first one. It was $140 roughly, it was $137. We were told, or we were projected to have a bill of about $40,000 that we would pay back in these separate and directed payments. But Medicaid transformation has been a challenge on top of COVID for us. And not just for our department, it's also been a challenge to EMS and social services as well in navigating this new system of billing multiple insurance companies. We also have some scheduled computer replacement in there. So summary, our total budget request for this year is $15 million and change. County appropriations of that, the ask was $8,371,983. This is a comparison across the budget years. Again, the last couple of COVID years have been swollen with COVID grant money or COVID funding from the state. And that's the end of my comments. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you, Dr. Silvernell, for your report. I'd like to know, one of the... I don't know whether you call it a disease or whatever, asthma and those respiratory-like systems. Have you checked into the problems or is it the resistance? Or is it something that's growing or is reoccurring demises for us?
In terms of asthma rates?
Asthma and those children diseases that causes them to have seizure. They're children with seizures and stuff like that. What you think is a cause of that, is there some way we would know?
The cause of seizures is, there are many different things that cause seizures in children. Some of those are inheritable forms of epilepsy. One of the most common forms of seizures in children are febrile seizures. They usually occur in children under five. Sometimes seizures are post-traumatic, where there's been a head injury to that individual. Asthma has both often intrinsic factors, where some folks have what we call intrinsic asthma. They have an airway tree that is just overreactive. And then there is extrinsic asthma, where people react to a stimulus. So they react to ragweed pollen or cat dander or tobacco smoke, things like that.
I was curious about the impact of the standing water and that intermix because it's... it seems to be just not improving, but increasing, and I'm just wondering if the standing water or the impact thereof of that, that the drainage and the water that stands looks horrible or whatever, that's a community kind of thing that I've noticed that exists in our area since I'm looking at drainage this term.
There are some harmful alga, I can't say the words.
Yeah, my tongue is tongue-in-...
Harmful algal blooms, algae blooms or algal blooms. In saltwater, we sometimes see something called a red tide, which is a type of algae that kills fish and is toxic in those. In freshwater, we sometimes see a bloom of a blue-green algae. It's, would be considered a more primitive form of algae, and that does have adverse health effects. The more common types of algae that we see growing in the ditches alongside the road, as far as I know, do not have proven human health effects, but from the standpoint of drainage, we always want to see, you know, we don't want to see standing water. Standing water becomes a place where mosquitoes and other pests can nest. So I think that from the drainage standpoint, we could do better with how we manage our drain water, but I'm not aware of a human health effect from the algae, the typical algae that grows in those ditches.
I've been curious about it because I see it and, you know, it's always there and it just look, so I would just want, I said, if I had the chance, I'd ask you.
Okay.
Yeah, Dr. Souvenir, I want to thank you for helping to create that additional touch point, education point to our restaurateurs. It's been a longstanding issue not having that connectivity, and I look forward to seeing further improvements on that front as we improve customer service on that through education and through working with our restaurateurs to make sure that we're creating a hospital environment for business. So I wanted to thank you for that. I know you mentioned it, but thank you so much for helping lead that effort.
Oh, you're welcome. I think, I'm not sure why that ever stopped, Commissioner. The health department used to offer that, that may have gone back to staffing. Angie may know why that stopped years ago, it was, it had been abandoned, but we do feel that that's in the community's best interest to have us as the regulatory body at least offering that education to our restaurant community here.
Dr. Souvenir, I know we're talking about budget, but I want to ask a question about providing surveillance and control of the mosquitoes. I know what we do in the city, and I did have a question last year or year before last, one about mosquitoes out in the county. So what is that, and just how does the county provide itself?
We have these wonderful mosquito traps that Jim Gardner, we are so fortunate to have Mr. Gardner on our staff. I've told Jim he's a model employee, and Jim goes around and he sets mosquito traps in different areas around the county. So down along the Contentia Creek, he's, there are places out in the Bell Arthur area, there's a swamp out there, he sets traps, different areas around the county, and then we collect those mosquitoes. They're collected in the trap, Jim processes those mosquitoes, and in a program that's run with ECU and CDC, we send those out for examination, looking for viral diseases that mosquitoes spread. And then they also will go out and do some spraying. Spraying is usually at the request of the locality, but we do survey the mosquitoes to see what species of mosquitoes are living in the area, and then those mosquitoes are sorted and frozen and sent out for analysis, looking to see if there are any of the mosquito-borne illnesses in them, like West Nile encephalitis, Eastern equine encephalitis, some of these brain infections that mosquitoes sometimes carry.
Okay.
And knock on wood, we haven't found those, so. Our pools were all negative last year, which was good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any additional questions? Thank you very much for your presentation, and we appreciate you adjusting our schedule and coming in.
Thank you again, sorry, I'm a little frazzled just trying to be in three places at once.
Good luck. Well, you got one of them knocked out, so.
Have a good day, folks.
You too. Do we now want to move on? Any discussion questions or directives for county staff? Commissioner Ward?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Huggett? Mr. Vice Chair? Commissioner Nunley?
Yes, briefly, I just wanted to raise a question that, before the board that I raised with the manager last night, believe that, the name is escaping, ECVC took the step of addressing employee salaries, and we've made an effort to make sure that we're addressing employee salaries within our ranks. We've done the same at the airport through our board, making sure that our lowest level wage earners are at market. And so I just asked the manager about some of our other third-party vendors, about where they are specifically at the convenience sites. We touched on Solid Waste last night. We contract with a third party that provides those services, and just had a question about where those employees were paid and if there was anything that would not put our, obviously, I'm very happy with the budget, I'd like to keep it where it is and keep the tax rate flat, but just within our proposed budget, if there's a way that we could go to those vendors to see if they can kind of join, join with us in an effort to make sure that those that are working with the county are being compensated appropriately.
Thank you. Commissioner Perkins, your question?
Thank you very much. I think we're doing great moving forward.
I do too. Commissioner McCall?
Thank you, Mrs. Manager. I must share, in reference to Chris, your comment with ECVC, I serve on that board, and I must say that they have been doing tremendously well in terms of making sure their, the lease of these are being compensated, and I'm like you, I try to follow that procedure in terms of making sure that those people who are doing the most work, it's really compensated accordingly, and I can say that they've been following a tremendous path of being equal to all of their employer and fair. So, but I'm glad you brought that part up because I'm certain concerned about that as well, and certain they've been doing, they're very transparent with that, so I'm very pleased.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say I'm thankful for everybody's presentations and participation today, and if nothing else, we'll go ahead and be at recess until tomorrow morning. Hope everyone has a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.